For order. Uh, roll call, please.
Hussein.
Here.
Mika. Vitek.
Here.
Huber.
Here.
Shudy.
Here.
Carl.
Here.
Weiner.
Here.
Murdig.
Here.
Eliffson.
Here.
McKenzie.
Here.
Negro.
Here.
Metzinger.
Here.
Campbell.
Here.
Ray.
Here.
Kinney.
Here.
Kufal.
Here.
Franek. Stark.
Here.
Stendor.
Here.
Berlin.
Here.
Miranda.
Here.
Twenty present.
Okay, number two on the agenda, we will reserve a moment of silence and then we'll do the pledge of allegiance. Will you please stand for the pledge of allegiance? Need a motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Kathy Shudy. Second. Second by Mike Berlin, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
You want to oppose, motion carries, thank you. Uh, public comment period. Uh, we've changed it a little bit where it has to pertain to the, uh, ordinances or whatever's on the agenda of this meeting. And we want to limit it to three minutes if possible. Um, I don't have anybody that requested to speak, I don't know if we have anybody. I don't see any hands up. Uh, this is the last call. The public comments. All right, we go to number four, presentation, Ash County Fair Horseshoe Awards.
So, we have a county fair horseshoe pitching contest for the county board supervisors, it was our best year ever. We had businesses and towns donating for the, um, contest. And instead of getting five dollars, this year it was twenty-five dollars. So, everyone's thinking, this year, this year. So, and your name, this one carried the prize. The first one, first place went to Marne Vita. Party gets forty-five dollars in order state may. Second place went to our own Dan Brady.
Oh.
Third place went to our own Pat Kennedy. And you can see your first look at it, you're all of us together. Fourth place went to Derek Kufal, for twenty-five dollars.
Here.
Fifth place went to Rich Huber, he got twenty-five dollars. Also. And yours, you got a twenty-dollar gift card from the elves, that's me. He has a grand prize drawing, and anybody who came to the contest, you threw your name in a handy bundle with a gift show, or whatever you want to do in the shop. And this went to Rich Huber. On your table, this, if you could put your name on it, we'll just give it quick. We have one gift certificate left over that we didn't need, so we're drawing from all supervisors, we did not get the gift, or whatever we
Going to my seniors.
Want to put your name on there quick? And we'll let Dan draw the name on it here, if you were at the event and didn't get, there's people, it's already after. We just want to draw one name, and they will get it from the door. And winner is Don Weiner. So, we can get everybody together for a quick picture, then we'll be done with this. Will you be done by less than thirty? I have to leave my other stuff to you.
Thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome.
Okay, now we'll go to the regular agenda, number five. Approval of the June twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three county board minutes.
Ray, so move to approve.
Made the motion. Okay, motion made by Brad Ray, do we have a second? Okay, second by Louis Carroll, in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, motion carries, thank you. You gotta do the minutes, right?
You did the minutes.
Yeah. Approval of the June twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three county board minutes.
No, we just didn't.
Oh, okay, that's what I thought, I thought we did. Resolution. R O nine, twenty-twenty-three, one-four-four-nine, county forest variable acreage share payment. Yeah.
This is something, this is something we do every year, uh, it's a standard resolution, Chris Hoffman's online if you have any further questions.
Yes.
This is Laura Negro, I'll make the motion that we pass resolution R zero-nine, twenty-twenty-three, one-four-four-nine.
Motion by Laura Negro to approve, do we have a second?
This is Huber, I'll second it.
Question.
Rich?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I didn't see him raise his hand. Yes, Bill?
How much, uh, is Chris on? How, how much do we totally owe?
Chris?
Dick?
Yes.
At the meeting, Chris, Chris was saying that they're budgeting three-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand dollars for it, it's going to be short because of the weather and the conditions like that, so we don't owe money, the county gives you the money from the forestry when they sell, uh, like timber, timber sales.
We owe, we owe money.
Yeah, oh, yeah, it, this is when, years back, when we purchased that land from the mining companies, the state loaned the money or to the county to purchase it, and through timber sales, then we paid that twenty percent tax back.
Right.
Uh, forth, towards that loan, I don't know exactly what the balance is, if Chris was on, he would probably know for sure, we can find that out. Send it out to all the board members, too. But it's a, you, this is a yearly, we approve this every year, so that we continue to pay on that loan.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm having all kinds of computer problems this morning. So this is an annual loan that we take out and we pay it back every year, um, in May. So we don't owe anything.
Yeah.
Chris, what's the dollar about, do you know?
Um, it comes out to just over twenty thousand dollars. We use it for road maintenance and wildlife projects.
Yo. This is Supervisor Metzinger. Uh, how much is outstanding? Totally what we owe is if we, if we paid it off in full, I know you give twenty percent of your timber sales every year to loan payment.
We pay the twenty thousand dollars back every year, so we don't owe anything.
I, I know, but there must be an outstanding balance there someplace.
There is no outstanding balance to the state at this point. This is the only loan we take with the state, we pay it back annually.
Okay. Very, that, Chris, then, when, when that land was purchased, you know, from the mining companies, are you seeing that as paid in full?
That's paid in full, it's been paid off for the last ten, ten or twelve years, probably.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet.
Any more discussion? All right, we have a motion in a second on the table to approve the, uh, county forest acreage share payment. Resolution, R O nine, twenty-twenty-three, fourteen-forty-nine, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, motion carries, thank you. We go to five C, approve Ashen County Forest Annual Work Plan for twenty-twenty-four.
So this is an annual document that we produce as well. Um, it doesn't change much year to year, we list basically what the county forestry department does. What changes from year to year is on the front page, which is the number of acres of Ashen County Forest property that we will be looking at in twenty-twenty-four. Um, which this year, or next year comes out to just over fifteen hundred acres. Um, we'll examine that property and make a determination if it's ready to have a timber sale established, and if it does, we'll establish and attempt to sell that sale, and if it doesn't, uh, we'll put it back into the system for when we feel like it's, will be ready. Um, this is something that, this report we do annually, we have to submit it to the state, um, as part of the administrator grant funding that we get, so that's why we bring it to you every year.
Matt?
McKenzie moved to approve.
Motion to approve by Matt McKenzie, we have a second, Marty?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Marty Vitek. Hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
We've got a five D, approve nomination to the Joint Dispatch Intergovernmental Board. Rich.
As long as we're on forestry, uh, is there an update on carbon, carbon credits, or where is that at?
Uh, Mr. Huber, I'll address that during my comments at the end.
I'd move to approve Ron Stender for the Joint Dispatch Committee.
Bill?
I will second that motion.
Motion by Matt, Ken, McKenzie to approve, seconded by Bill Metzinger. The appointment, uh, Ron Stender to the Joint Dispatch Governing Board, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries, thank you. We go to five E, resolution R O nine, twenty-twenty-three, fourteen-fifty. Resolution, creating a permanent planning committee.
Okay, so, this is, it's just several committees I've been talking about in recent months. Um, and, so the Ashen County is required to update its plan in twenty-twenty-six. We have to do that every ten years, so the first one was done in two thousand and six, then we updated in sixteen, and now we have to up to get, update again in twenty-six. Because things are the world is moving so fast, and you know, there's all sorts of opportunities out there, uh, both with federal grants and other opportunities. We've also seen other issues, like flooding in the area, and so we, we've been, I've been working with UW Extension, and we believe it's time to set up a committee to actually start, start the planning process. It's going to be long and involved, um, it's going to have to touch every facet of the county. Those, from economics to housing, to, uh, new green infrastructure, to, uh, possible health concerns coming forward, but they, um, to what we do with our, our wetlands, and how we handle all this stuff. What are, where do we want to see the county in ten years, now is our opportunity to do it. So, um, the feeling was that if we start a new comprehensive planning committee, we can start working on it. And we wanted to make it permanent because things are changing rapidly, a lot faster than they did in two thousand and six and two thousand and sixteen. This way, the committee can still meet even after the group, new plan is updated, they can adapt and change quickly to update the plan as needed going forward. Um, because this is going to be a long-range plan, we wanted to make sure that this didn't apply to the limit that supervisors have on committees they can sit on. We wanted to be able to make sure we got supervisors on who actually want to do this, who feel it's important. And, so the goal is to have three to five supervisors, uh, county staff, somebody from Extension, and then they would invite all the local communities in. So, they would invite officials from Glidden, or from Butternut, and to talk about what the issues are affecting them, and how that fits in the overall picture of the county. So we want, we want to make this all-inclusive of everybody in the county, so we can work hand in hand with that, with those municipalities as they do their own plans. So. So, I don't know, I, I'll take questions, I guess.
This is Pat, could you scroll down on that document, please?
Yeah, sure.
Right in the middle right now, in, uh, one of the be it further resolved, it says, and it finishes with, and over the next twenty years. My question is, why the choice of twenty years instead of, say, future, and I'm thinking about the climate change and the environment in particular, why we would peg a certain number of years as opposed to things that are long-term that we should always be considering?
Well, uh, that's the reason for making it a permanent committee, because of things that, uh, like you mentioned, um, twenty years is kind of when you have to redo your new company, so that's why we picked that.
What about a choice where it said both in the immediate short term, or if you want to put in, you know, parentheses, next twenty years, and, um, or long, and then use the phrase either long-term or future, because some of what this committee would likely work on goes well beyond the twenty-year impact, even the life of a culvert should last more than twenty
That's fine, if you want to offer amendment to that, that's fine.
Um, because I wouldn't want the committee to later argue over, why is there twenty years in here, should we limit it to anything in the twenty years, or could we consider things longer? Um, so to, so I guess I'll make a motion that we change that to, to face both in the immediate short term and in the future.
That's fine.
Then it gives them latitude to consider long-term things.
I'll second that motion.
Dan, you want to read back the motion?
Uh, yeah, so Supervisor Kenny wants to strike out over the next twenty years, and I'll show it right here with the cursor. And replace it, uh, with, in, 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 at the end, but in the future. In its place.
All right, we need a, we need a motion to approve this, yes.
We did, we got.
We have the motion in the second.
Pat and Kathy.
Um, with a committee like this, shouldn't we?
Right there.
With a committee like this, shouldn't we have this a little more structured, where it is certain committee chairs, finance, forestry, or land conservation, extension, or highway, um, law enforcement, as we're looking at all these pieces, to make sure that we have the right people on there?
Well, the goal was to make sure that we had people that wanted to do it.
Right.
Not people who would, who necessarily, who are a chair of a committee but doesn't necessarily want to do it.
Well, then, wouldn't, or at least somebody from those committees?
Well, I believe they
Bring that back to
If they're interested, they should
Feedback should go from each committee into this committee to keep this a, and then otherwise with the staffing and stuff, I, I I get that, but when it comes to this, you know, there's other committees that we have that are laying out plans that we have a little more structured than just kind of whoever wants to.
Well, and I think those committees should forward their plans or ideas to this committee to work into the overall picture. So, but certainly if you wanted, if you wanted to be on that committee, for instance, I I'd let, let Chair Kufal know.
I'm just saying, I, I just feel like a committee like this should have a little more input, we should have a little more input as to who sits on there than just, like I said, whoever wants to.
Well, if you'd like
It's a piece of policy, so.
If you'd like to offer an amendment, feel, feel free.
Um, like I said, I didn't know which one, that's why I was kind of putting this out there in the middle of this discussion piece, because it should be a discussion between all, amongst all of us, which kind of committees are, are the ones that should kind of take a lead on this, and, and have the people on the committee, so, uh, George seems to have an idea, because his hand went up, or he just wants to tell me to be quiet, so I'm good with either of them.
It seems a way to, to, um, respond to Laura's concern, is to just include that this committee shall draw upon all of these pre-exist, other committees. So it's, this committee is required to draw upon the input of all the other committees that was solved that. Otherwise, the input of having someone from all the other committees can make a really large committee.
Yeah, that's
No, I, I'm talking, if we're going to have the five, then say somebody from finance, highway, uh, one, one or you know, forestry or land conservation, highway, extension, and law enforcement, some of those bigger pieces that you have to plan for when we're talking about different, because, uh, public property does, is kind of the property one. Um, extension works with a lot of the land planning and such, so does, maybe forestry then. So, and then highway, because all of that kind of stuff feeds into, all the roads are done, what kinds of materials we use, things like that, if we're, you know, since sense of longevity of, of our earth has been brought up inside of this, and then finance, because you need somebody that understands, this is going to cost some money and bring it back to the committee to say, hey, we're going to have to put in a little money for this, so that's my thought process behind this.
Hi.
In the, in that paragraph, it says that this committee is going to be confirmed by the county board. So it's, uh, at the time of appointing the committee, the county board gets to decide who to confirm, so it's already in there.
Matt?
I, I guess the one question I have is, why couldn't this just be a obligation of the executive committee?
Matt?
The issue of making this a permanent committee as opposed to an ad hoc committee, and the ad hoc would end after the, the comprehensive plan was done, was so that it would provide the board and the county an opportunity to address climate change in an ongoing manner. One of the counties in Wisconsin, Monroe County, has been, um, uh, for those of us on land and water conservation, a county that we were pointed to in terms of looking at, so I've looked at their agendas and minutes and membership, and one of the things that strikes me there is a, and this is true of other places, where I've seen people that are actually productive on addressing climate change issues, is it starts with people on there that are interested in serving to address that topic. What we're proposing is that this planning committee would consist of people interested both in planning, but also have some interest in addressing planning, you know, with climate change in, in mind. So the people that serve on these committees tend to have an interest in climate change and, in addressing those issues. If they don't have that interest, not much happens, is how these committees go. So one, we'd find people of interest, but as I look at what Monroe County has done, it strikes me that they work through topics that they think are important. And as they do that, let's take highway, you know, I think we're all familiar with, you know, needing bigger culverts these days and that sort of stuff. But as they work through issues, um, the membership seems to rotate some. And so I don't think the membership of this needs to, to be static, you know, in forever being the same hats, if you will, from department heads or committee chairs, but people that have an interest in it. And then as we work through topics, pulling in people that are both interested and have a position, which often means budget, um, so that they can actually do something, because without budget considerations, it's hard to do most of this, so the membership will rotate also. But if there's a department head that says, look, I, I really don't want to do that, I've got enough on my plate, um, because it's not just climate change, it's, um, the whole planning committee, you know, all the other topics too. Um, the typical response is, I'm happy to be pulled in when there's a topic you want to address that involves my department. Um, I'll come and I'll participate and contribute then, but then, but I don't want to be tied down to the rest. So the leadership is those who have an interest in this, but others pull in when it pertains to them. But someone on finance, sure, that would make a lot of sense to have someone on finance willing to serve. And I would say that the county board chair then, when considering appointments, should also consider appointments to these committees, so that hopefully you do have a member on that committee, you know, especially finance and exec and some like that, that have an interest in also being willing to serve on the planning committee, so that that committee is represented.
Kathy?
Um, the issue of having a certain committee um, decide who's going to be on this, or that they should be on it, you leave out three-fourths of the county board when you make that decision, that only one committee will be um, in charge of it, so I think it needs to be the whole county board, not just one committee, like executive. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Okay. We need a, we have a motion in a second.
When the order, this vote is on Supervisor Kenny's amendment. So that's the person, so.
All right, we, uh, we need a, a vote to change the resolution, um, number four, uh, on the further result. Uh, omit the, over the next twenty years and place in the future.
Motion for the amendment.
But.
What?
That made the motion, I seconded it.
Right.
On the amendment.
That's not what they said to start with, that's why I said that.
Exactly, so that's what you're voting on.
I know, that's what I just said.
Right, exactly.
Okay, we're voting on the amendment, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Now we got to vote on the
Yes.
Brad Ray will move to approve the amended resolution.
All right, do we have a second?
Marty Vitek, I'll second it.
Motion by Brad Ray, seconded by Marty Vitek to approve the Andy Committee with the new amendment, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, motion carries.
Uh, so anybody who's interested in being in this committee, please see, check Kufal or myself.
We've got a five F, approve nominations for local emergency We've got a five F approved nominations for local emergency planning committee.
May I?
Okay, Laura.
This is Laura Negro, a second then.
Motion by Matt McKenzie to approve, seconded by Laura Negro. All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. We'll go to five G ordinance zero, zero, nine, twenty twenty-three, one twenty-five, medical disease ordinance. Clarence?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Mrs. Laura Negro, I'll second that.
Pardon me?
This is Laura Negro, I'll second that.
Motion by Clarence Campbell to approve, seconded, seconded by Laura Negro. All in favor, say aye.
Yeah.
Pardon? No, yeah. Okay, any discussion? Anybody want to discuss this? Not much to discuss. Okay, all in favor, say aye. Five H, Shawmigan Bay Housing Coalition Agreement.
Okay, Kelly Westland is here if there's any questions.
Yeah.
I know. Thank you. I don't, um. Before we do this, this is Laura Negro, I'll make a motion that we approve, um, this agreement with the Shawmigan Bay Housing Coalition.
Yeah, Liz.
Liz Frannick, I'll second that motion.
This is Mackenzie El Epstein.
Okay, Bill.
This is Metzinger. Um, could you explain a little bit what the coalition does?
Happily. Um, so I should start by saying I'm Kelly Westland. I work for UW Extension. I'm based out of Bayfield County, but serving the whole Shawmigan Bay region around housing issues. Um, this charter is intended partly to formalize a working group that's already been active in the region for the last five years or so. Um, we had a collaborative effort that was part of WEDA's Rural Affordable Workforce Housing Initiative. They've conducted the housing study in the region and, and done some other work. Um, we're at a point now where we want to formalize that coalition and build on it, including new partners, because there are a number of funding opportunities coming down the line. And the kind of sense of urgency that came with this is that there is, um, a new HUD funding opportunity that's available now. Uh, we're in the application period. And one of the requirements for regional applications is that there's some documentation of that, that partnership, that ongoing collaboration. And at first we were thinking about doing, you know, memorandums of understanding between all the partners. But if we go to all that work only to not get this grant, then we have to do it all over again for the next one, right? So instead, uh, we opted to formalize this group that already had something of a track record of working together and be able to have it as almost an evergreen document for opportunities going forward, where we can point to it and say, look, we have folks in the region that, um, recognize this as a priority and are willing to work to address it collaboratively. Uh, it does not commit you to spending any money. It doesn't commit you to, you know, any staff time contributions, that sort of thing at this point. It's just that, um, that statement of support. Um, although I do hope that sometime in the future, there will be maybe further contribution.
Thank you for your explanation.
Any?
Kathy?
Hi Kelly, a question for you. I'm sure you're aware of this, but for senior housing in Ashland County, there, it's a one to three-year wait to get into a senior apartment. And there's like thirty people on a list, so. I, I'm taking, I'm working with someone who's trying to get in there and they said, I'll be dead before three years. So it's dire straits for people who are trying to get into senior housing in Ashland County.
It is, and you just put your, your finger like right on sort of the most acute issue that we've got. Um, according to that study that was conducted, I believe in eighteen and nineteen now, so it's been a little while. Um, even then, uh, we had like fully half of the respondents in most towns, um, saying that they expected that they are, that somebody in their family would need to live in, um, low or no maintenance housing for independent seniors within the next five years. And if that study was done four or five years ago, we're, we're at that point.
Right.
And, um, we just don't have a lot available. So instead, we're losing people that have been longtime contributors to the, to the community, uh, who have to go to, you know, Madison or Milwaukee or somewhere else where they can find suitable and affordable housing. So we've really got to get some things going here as well, if we want to keep those people in our, in our communities.
Thank you, Kelly.
Pat?
I read an article a few days ago that said the biggest factor in the demand for housing is the increase in household formation, meaning people living separately, creating their own household, because of baby boomers largely through divorce, are creating two households as they separate and go their own ways. So the need for senior housing is growing, and it's not just for those who need the assistance and stuff. So because the baby boomers are still creating more households, it puts pressure on the younger people. But also just as our demographics and we're, you know, have, you know, in terms of demographics, right? We're the oldest or second oldest on average in the county or median. But it also, I think with the seniors, if we create lots of housing for young people, which we need, and we need them here for lots of reasons. But if we overbuild housing for young people and then as they age and more of us age, we're still short of the senior. So if we created more senior housing, and it's not just, you know, the stuff for assisted living and stuff. It's people, you know, that would move into a condo right now. So let's say we had condos, create households that way. Then those household, those buildings are still going to have life left when the younger people today need them. So they'll serve a purpose now of decreasing the demand for living places, but also then be available as younger people and middle-aged people today grow older. And it seems to be a lack of emphasis on that in this region versus trying to find something for younger people.
No, and, and you're right about that too, Pat. Um, right now, what we're seeing, at least anecdotally and, and out of that study, is that, um, a lot of the older folks that are here now of retirement age would like to downsize. They just don't have an option to move into. So instead, they're still occupying these single-family homes that could be made available to, you know, working families. Um, and so we've got to find, uh, you know, a sensible solution that allows them to age in place, uh, in our communities and opens up more of those houses, uh, to attract other people as well. And you're right, the population increases that we've seen in the last ten years have largely been people of retirement age. Um, and that's not going to change anytime soon. I know Bayfield County is expected to be the oldest county in Wisconsin within the next ten years or less, so. Yeah. If it's not already, we're already twelve years on average, older than the rest of the state.
Laura?
I was just going to say, Kelly, thank you for coming. Um, as I've been getting more involved in the community. This is like, as everyone here is kind of seeing, is a huge issue for Ashland County. Um, as I've been kind of getting more educated, which by the way, Kelly can educate you way more than you ever want to be educated, but.
Fire hose, sorry, Blake.
This is a difficult, very difficult topic, and the more resources we as a county are willing to put towards it, the easier I think we'll be able to crack that nut, because it is very complex. And, um, you know, I've got parents that are seventy-two. It's, it's going to happen. Um, you guys in here are at the ages, many of us, where we got to start thinking about that. So I think this is really a important topic and I'm all in on it, so.
Thank you.
Um, and I just wanted to mention too, because we're talking right now about people singly in houses of a certain age and such. But what I see at the aging unit also is that I'm seeing our elders taking care of their spouses who have dementia, but then also caring for some grandkids. So i- it's not just, we're looking for little condos here and there. Sometimes we're looking for family housing for them to move into so that they can have a little support. And because they just can't take care of a house anymore, but they still need to have the bedrooms. Because they, I've got one that's taking care of two grandkids along with a husband that has, uh, medical issues. And it, it just, it's not, sadly, it's not untypical.
Sure.
Liz, did you want to speak?
Yes, thank you, Dick. Liz Frannick, um, you talk about the climate change and all that too. We're going to have people moving here from different areas that, um, they lost everything and they're going to come here with nothing. And, you know, they, they'd like to put roots here, so, you know, family housing, like Nick, uh, Laura had said about family housing, that's going to be a big, um, issue for our area. With our, our population of housing right now, the housing is, many of them are dilapidated. So, you know, it's, it's very hard. And then you hear about people that want to move here from the cities and everything and the lack of housing for workforce too.
Yeah, um, Liz speaks to a few of the other, um, dynamics at play here. One, yes, climate migration. I don't know if you all saw the Climate Proof Duluth article that ran, I think sometime last year in the New York Times. Talking about folks fleeing wildfires and, um, you know, some of this drought stuff out west to come to regions like this. Um, and oftentimes coming with higher incomes where they can buy houses as soon as they hit the market for asking price or well above, um, which has increased the cost of housing in the region by over a hundred and fifty percent in the last fif- in the last five years. Um, because they can snatch it right off the market before the folks who live and work here year-round can afford it. So we have several initiatives in the works to help kind of get at a number of these issues. But this is the part that at least like has the, the regional acknowledgement of support for this collaborative effort. And I'm happy to give you all the detail you want, like, like suggested about any of these other efforts that we've got going, so.
Pat?
Kelly, you know, in the last statement you made, a question I have and have had for some time is, we hear about these people coming from the outside area with, you know, more money than most of us that live here. Why don't we see more housing, and I'm thinking condos in particular? New construction with the sort of amenities, quality, style, space. You know, we've got the lake here. Why aren't we seeing more of that kind of development? Because we keep hearing these people with money are coming, and for a lot of them, at the ages that they're coming, it would seem like a kind of housing that would suit them, especially if they want to go back and visit kids from where they came from. You know, they don't have the house to worry about, they've got a condo. Why aren't we seeing more development of, you know, in particular condos with our lakefront?
Again, like everything else with housing, it's kind of complicated. There are a few factors there, right? So one is attracting developers to this, to rural areas in general, sometimes is more challenging. Um, I can tell you in several of the townships where I'm working with them to get new housing built. Um, you know, eight to twelve units will satisfy their demand. Um, but you're not going to get any of the big developers to come here because they can't get this economy of scale that they need for projects like that. Um, oftentimes they're pitching, you know, fifty units or more at a time, and that works for Washburn or Ashland. Maybe not so much for, you know, Glidden or, or Morse or wherever. So, um, there's that piece. Uh, the other is that there is just a shortage of the skilled labor. If you talk to any contractor right about now, most of them are booked out, maybe two years. Um, and the hardest part is finding people that can help them actually build the thing, you know? Um, the other thing is the funding tools that we use, especially when it comes to affordable housing. Most of those new developments are, um, paid for with low-income housing tax credits, li-tac credits and TIF funds. Um, many of our communities don't have TIF districts and, and even if, like, it might not even make sense for those communities to try to set them up based on, you know, how they, um, just how, how they are at, at this point. Um, and then the, the, the li-tac credits, um, are limited. It's almost always oversubscribed. They never have enough to go around, so they get more and more competitive every single year. And it's a complicated funding mechanism, um, that, uh, basically if a developer wins those credits, they turn around and sell them to an equity investor that gives them the upfront cash that they need to start building this stuff. And, um, depending on where that development is, if they're building a brand-new complex in Madison, they might be able to sell those credits for ninety, ninety-five cents on the dollar. In rural areas, it's more like eighty cents on the dollar. Um, and those credits are also, they have really, um, stringent scoring criteria. So if we're trying to put up a housing development in a place that doesn't have easy access to, you know, public transportation, grocery stores, postal services, medical care, all of those things, then those communities just aren't going to be as competitive. So in the last round in twenty twenty-three, for example, the nine percent li-tac credits didn't get awarded to any community north of Eau Claire or Wasa. Um, and I know that there are some efforts to change rules, uh, around some of these things at the state level. But, uh, those are federal dollars that I, I don't, I don't really see big changes there. They might, um, they've tried to increase the dollar amount associated with the four percent credits that come through the state and to put like a geographic distribution framework on them so that they're allocated according to the Regional Planning Commission, um, uh, regions. But that didn't make it into the last package, so we're kind of waiting to see if maybe we get a better, better chance at it the next time around. I hope I answered your question, Pat, sorry.
Yeah, I should talk to you more about it later.
Okay.
Yes, John? Your mic on?
Pardon?
On a, on housing to the regions, does that include reservations?
Yes, both. Um, we're, we're looking at this as, um, all of Ashland and Bayfield counties, including the reservations.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Yeah. We have a motion in a second to approve the Bay Housing Coalition Agreement. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next we go to five I, Towne of Sandberg Discussion.
Okay, so this is going to be a rather lengthy one. Um, I have requests that I think the county board should know. I, I'm going to go through a bit of history of how we got here, where we are, and what it looks like and where we're going. I want to emphasize that I'm taking some very complex things and distilling them to a few words. You know, uh, an example is the Treaty of eighteen fifty-four. It's a large document. And what I say in here is not everything that's in there. It's, it's a much more comprehensive document. But for our purposes, I, and to keep time short, I'm condensing things a lot. If you have interest in some of this stuff, I do have copies of everything for you to read the whole documents. You become more interested. So, a- and the whole thing really does start with that treaty of eighteen fifty-four. And that's where, and in that treaty, essentially, the Chippewa tribes of Lake Superior, so that's, um, agreed to cede territory to this United States government in exchange for the reservations, uh, different money interests, that could be clothing and money and guns and whatever have you. And their right to hunt fish and gather. Um, in addition, it also stated in, in there that lands owned by tribal members cannot be involuntarily taken from them. So that's an important aspect to where we are today. Um, it did give the president the power to as- assign specific lands to members. Um, and it could decide, the president could assign or not assign restrictions, take them away to the use of the land. Um, including whether or not the land could be subject to taxes. Now, to point out, neither the president nor the Congress ever did that. They never gave authority to tax those lands. Um, so we fast forward to two thousand and six. And the, the United States Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals in Cincinnati issued a ruling in the, and I might put to the name here, that the Kewanabe Indian Community versus, uh, Naftali. They essentially ruled in that case, and this had to deal with a different, this had to do with the Lake Superior Chippewa tribe in Michigan, that under the treaty, the lands can't be taxed. So that, that issue was already was resolved in two thousand and six by a federal appeals court in Cincinnati. Um, and two thousand and seven, um, the DOR sent guidance to local assessors in Ashland, Bayfield, Irons, or Washburn, Burnet, Byless County. And Ashland, Bayfield, Irons, Sawyer, Washburn, Burnet, Vilas County. A- and answering questions regarding this court case. And in the, in that letter, they stated that. Um the D O R is to consider uh the property exempt. When a claim is made that these are properties covered under the Treaty of eighteen fifty-four. And that it was the onus of the municipality to prove otherwise. So so as ba- far back as two thousand and seven, it was assumed these lands were exempt unless the municipality could prove otherwise. Um. And then in two thou- thousand, two thousand and seven. Um. There is the L C O tribe in so- in Sawyer County asserted that all land. On the reservation owned by members of the tribe or the tribe itself itself were exempted by state and local taxes. And they, that was following the Kinniwaya decision. The state of Wisconsin disagreed with that assertion. They believed that any land allotted or given to tribal members after the allotment act of eighteen eighty-seven. Was taxed. And then by passing the allotment act, Congress created what's called alienation, which allows the taxation of land through inference. And therefore the land could be taken by tax deed. However, uh the town, the state did agree that any land allotted prior to the allotment act of eighteen eighty-seven was exempt. Um so there's a difference there in how the state viewed it and how the federal courts viewed it. Um roughly around the same time. Um that the L C O asserted their property taxes is ex- exempt, the Town of Sandborn passed a resolution. Exempting all tribal owned property within the town. So this, this went on for several years. And then in November twelfth, two thousand and fifteen, responding to some some complaints. Um Secretary Chandler, who was who was then the Secretary of the Department of Revenue. Uh issued a con- a conclusion in law. That all the tribal properties in the Town of Sandborn that that did not conform to state statutes to ma- remain exempt. Meaning they had to be allotted prior to eighteen eighty-seven. Um had to go back on the tax rolls for the for the two thousand and fourteen tax year payable in two thousand and fifteen. That letter from Secretary Chandler is in your packet, free to read. Um as is so a bunch of news stories about the issue, to give you a bunch of background. Um and then, okay. So as a result of the town's resolution, the D O R's, D O R's conclusion in law, the town had no choice. But to put these properties back on the tax rolls. Um and the state argued that. The chain had been broken of ownership and broken a lot of these lands, and therefore they were taxable forever. Now, then a case was heard by Judge Yakel of Saw- Sawyer County. He essentially ruled that the town's actions violate the uniformity clause in the Constitution. Um and that the town has a fiduciary obligation to all of its residents, both tribal and non-travel. And the uniformity clause in the Constitution, and Wisconsin's not alone in this, most states have it. That all all classes of property have to be treated the same. So for example, all lakefront property has to be considered the same as like all other lakefront property. Um they had, so that's how we get our assessors assessments here. Um so faced with a contempt of court finding, the town did put all the properties back on the tax roll per Judge Yakel's decision. In two thousand and seventeen, a number of the Lake Superior Chippewa tribes subject to the Treaty of eighteen fifty-four. By the state against the suit in all of its respective taxing districts. So that'd be Ashton County, Bayfield County, Sawyer County, all the town, the county, the towns, in this case, Sandborn. And Russell and Bayfield County, all the res- all respecting tax tax district for violating the Treaty of eighteen fifty-four. I illegally taxing tribal owned properties on the reservation. Um initially, the state won in U S District Court. Um and the counties continued to levy and towns continued to levy taxes. The tribes and their members, who were, there were individual members who were subject to the suit, who were plaintiffs in the suit. Filed in, filed in the U S Court of Appeals in Chicago. Uh that's because Wisconsin's covered by the Seventh District, whereas Michigan's covered by the Sixth District, so. Uh and last fall, the appeals court overturned the district court's decision. And ruled that all properties owned by tribal members on the reservations. That were subject to the Treaty of eighteen fifty-four. Were exempt from taxes regardless of when it, a tribal member gained ownership. Or any portion of ownership, or that any portion of ownership made the property exempt. So what that means is, uh with, a non-tribal member could have bought that property in nineteen hundred. Owned it for eighty or, uh say, a hundred and ten years in their family. And then they sold it to a member of the tribe in twenty-ten, that property became exempt again as soon as the tribal member owned it. And to this day, that's how it's working. If somebody were to buy. A re- if a tribal member were to buy a non-tribal member's home on any of the reservations, they immediately go off the tax rolls. And that's per the the court decision. So, uh the state of Wisconsin could have, could have appealed this decision to either the entire Seventh Circuit. On bank, which means the, all of the judges on the court instead of a three judge panel. Or to the United States Supreme Court. Uh the state chose not to appeal, thereby leaving the appeals court decision in place. And we are where we are today. Now, what that means to Ashton County. Now, as a result of Secretary Chandler's decision in two thousand and fifteen. Uh and we were required to pay omitted taxes, which is taxes that should have been charged but weren't. To all the taxing districts. Um so the money went to the town, the school district and the tech school, and we had to do that to fourteen and fifteen. Um that every year after that, the county then set the towns and the schools and would levy. Their taxes as they would normally would, and every August, we would have to settle with those taxing jurisdictions. Um and by settling, it means is if the town, but the Town of Sandborn levied a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in taxes. The county would have to ensure that by August fifteenth, the town had all a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Whether or not people were paying taxes or not. The the counties are required by state statute to levy, to settle with all the taxing districts. And so we had no choice in the matter, so we did that. Um you know, counties are then made whole, li- in the, normally in the process, counties are made whole. By either collecting the back taxes with interest from the property owners. Or eventually taking a tax deed out on the property and selling it. And we get our money back that way. However, because of the whole court issues, we could not do that in the Town of Sandborn. And despite what I've heard out there, no property was ever taken. In the Town of Sandborn because of this. So, um so, um. So since two thousand and fourteen, the county has ended up settling with the town and the schools almost two point two million dollars. Um that's not including interest. Um. Uh so we were out that money, and we're still out that money. That two point two million dollars. And you know, prior to me getting here, it almost broke the county. Having the, having to make up all those tax shortfalls. Um luckily, we're, the county was able to get out of it, but you know. So earlier this year, Ashton County and Bayfield County successfully lobbied the legislature to reimburse. Those counties affected by the L C O decision. So that would be us, Bayfield, Sawyer, Iron, Vilas Counties, who are all making tax settlements. Without getting tax monies back. So the state approved three point six million dollars for all the counties. In the state budget. However, when the governor did his, the governor did strike the word counties. From the payment. So the three point six million was still there, but the government, governor struck out, there's, struck the word counties out. So it wasn't restricted to counties. It was his belief that the affected towns should have access to some of the money too. And he said that in his budget message, his veto message. Um I should also note, during the same time period when we were lobbying the legislature for, to repay us. We were also lobbying the legislature to repay all the tribal members who paid their taxes and what really amounted to illegal taxes. We had several million dollars, we asked the state to appropriate. To pay, pay those taxes back. Cause we do in the end, it was the counties was going to have to, and the towns and. Um the legislature did decline to do that. However, we we actively tried to lobby for that, cause we wanted to solve the problem completely. Um. Um at the same time, this was all happening in February, and it's in your packet. The Town of Sandboard entered into a stipulation in federal court in Madison. Where they agreed that they would, they would refund all the tribal members who. Paid taxes under protest. At an interest rate of point eight percent per month compounded monthly. So the town initially tried to obtain a loan from the Board of Commissioners of Public Land in excess of one million dollars. Pay off all these taxes. Um that loan was denied. Uh last month, the town went back to the B C P L and asked for a little over six hundred thousand. That loan was granted. So last month, the town sent out the first of two scheduled refunds. The refunds went to tribal members who paid taxes under protest for the tax years two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and eighteen. Um by November of this year, the chargeback will be issued to Ashton County, the Town of Sandborn, the school district, the tech school. That preliminary chargeback is in your packet. Um. And I'll get back to the chargeback in a minute. So the first chargeback is roughly five hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars, give or take. Uh this amount will recharge, the county's portion will be charged on a separate allied item. Or then our budget to every, every taxpayer in county. The school districts portion will be charged to every taxpayer within the Ashton School District. The town's portion will be charged to everybody, every taxpayer in the town. So there's going to be a lot. Um in addition, the town's taxpayers are on the hook for the six hundred thousand dollar loan. It's a twenty-year loan. And so the the remaining taxpayers are ultimately responsible for paying that back. That'd be no different than if the city of Ashton took out a loan. That all the taxpayers in the city of Ashton would be responsible to pay that back. No matter how they, whatever funding mechanism they use to pay it back, it's still. They're responsible. Um so, so like I said, they sent refunds for the years twenty, two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and eighteen. So they're gonna take, their plan is to take this refund, this chargeback money, the five hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars when the town gets it. And do the second batch of refunds, and that would cover years two thousand and nineteen to present. They would then charge back again. Meaning that everybody in the county would have to pay the following year. Everybody in the school district, everybody in the towns, again, would have to pay the following year. And they would use the proceeds for this to, at least their plan is to pay back the six hundred thousand dollar loan, or most of it. Um at least that's what they, that's what they told the the B C P L when they took the loan out. Um so eventually, by the, sometime early next year, all of the. Tribal members in Sandborn who paid their taxes under protest will be refunded. Two thousand, from two thousand and fourteen to present with the point eight percent interest. Uh what will be unremained, not set, still remains unsettled. Is the tribal members who paid their taxes but didn't protest. There's a fair number of them too. And under the Seventh Circuit's decision, that's still an illegal tax that needs to be refunded. So somehow that issue has to be addressed, and how do we pay them back too? Now, again, it's not just Ashton, and it's not just the Town of Sandborn. There's smaller amounts in the Town of Ashland. And the Town of Jingles and the Town of White River. Um you know, and then in Bayfield County, they have the same problem. In Sawyer County, they have the same problem. Iron County has about nine homes where there's a problem. And Vilas County has a problem, so. And I can guarantee you that these ta- these tribal members who paid. Not not under protest are gonna have to get paid back. That is, that is what the court said. There's no ifs, ands, ors, or buts about it. So going forward. What we're gonna be doing is we're going to continue lobbying the state legislature to take care of this mess. The Department of Revenue started it, the state should finish it. They should make sure that every tribal member who paid taxes. Whether it's in Ashton County or Bayfield County or whatever county, who is, should get refunded with interest. That's the state's job. They should all, and we are also gonna try to get them to. Do a continuous appropriation for the loss of tax revenue. That all the taxing jurisdictions are gonna see because all the properties are exempt. What happens is right now, because those exempt properties, or our levy limit hasn't changed. Those properties came off the equalized value. So every county taxpayer is gonna be paying just a little bit more. Because those, the slice of the pie essentially got smaller. Every resident in the school district is just gonna pay a little bit more. Because of those exempt properties. Um now, the town has a different funding mechanism, and um I'll leave that to the town to describe how they're gonna fund themselves in the future. But they found a way, or they say, making that up. So we want the legislature to fix the entire problem, make sure people are paid their taxes back. And make sure that counties and towns and schools are given the lost revenue that we received as a, that were. Give us the lost revenue so our taxpayers are not paying slightly more, and the state owns up for the decisions they made in two thousand and fifteen. So yes.
Do we have an estimate on the ones that did not protest, so we know what the other amount is coming as?
I guess it's uh six hundred thousand dollars.
Six hundred thousand.
Right now with interest, as of September thirtieth.
Go ahead, Bill.
This is Metzinger speaking. Um this five hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. What share of that amount is Ashland County?
Um it's.
And the school and everything else?
Uh let me get to, I put the whole.
Wait, it's on the, it's on the thing?
Yeah, it, the chargeback is in here.
Okay. Okay, so Ashland County shares a hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars. That's going to be added to this year's tax roll throughout the whole county.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Now, the the rub in this too is the school has what, two hundred and thirty-two thousand or something? The school cannot add it to their levy this budget year. They have to, they can only do it next year.
Okay.
And so that creates a problem in the school where they have to come up with that two hundred and thirty-two thousand either from. App, from their general fund or how, or coming, cutting programs or whatever they do. The decision they make, they have to come up with that this year and cannot tax for it till next year.
So, so just continuing with my question. Um, the town of Sanburn has to raise a hundred and eighty nine thousand thirteen dollars.
Yes.
This year, is that full amount going to be levied?
I believe so. I don't think they have a choice. They took the six hundred thousand dollars and paid it off, paid it off already, so.
So what is going to happen next year then? You said something about a second loan?
A second, uh, so they're going to take the money from the chargeback. Which I'm trying to find here on the packet. Ah, here, here it is. So they're going to take this five hundred eighty two thousand dollars. Which is the chargeback for the first tax payments of, of fourteen to eighteen. They're going to take this money and then they're going to make this second payment to, of nineteen to present. But yes, what that inherently means is the town of Sam was taxpayers are going to have to pay the hundred and eighty nine thousand dollars in the chargeback. So essentially, they're going to see their taxes double again.
So, so what, what, are they going to have to take a second loan next year?
No, they're going to use this money.
Five hundred and eighty two thousand.
To pay, and then the second chargeback. We're going to get a chargeback again in February or so. And they're going to use that second chargeback to pay back the loan or most of it.
Okay, okay, the way, the way I understand it now, in two thousand and twenty-three. The state lowered the equalized value for the town of Sandberg.
Right.
And they probably lowered it by.
Dramatically.
At least fifty percent.
More, more than that.
Okay, yeah, I think like seventy-five percent of the taxpayers went off the roll. But a lot of that land was in forest crop, so it really had no effect as far as taking it out of the equalized value. So the thing is, there's smaller amounts of people that are taxable.
Right.
And so they have to raise this hundred and eighty nine thousand, but their equalized value should go down. And you don't know how much state aids are going to be, but I, I feel that the taxes probably won't double. If they only have to pay this hundred and eighty nine thousand back because the equalized value.
Right.
That the state has set should offset that. But, um, the town tax is only, that's the only tax in your. Uh, amount of taxes that you pay is based solely on what the assessed value is.
Yes.
So the assessed value, rest of, like the school, the vocational school, the county is based on the equalized value. And, but the town tax is based on the assessed value.
Right.
So.
Which is essentially the same thing now that they got rid of the personal property tax. So. So the point, the problem is the town's levy limit did not change. So while their, while their assessed value went down, they still have the same levy limit. So they, they can charge the full levy over the same group of taxpayers and. The hundred and eighty nine thousand plus the first interest payment on the loan.
So I, I just have one more question. So the hundred and eighty nine thousand is what they have to pay back? As far as their share of that.
First chargeback.
First chargeback.
Yeah.
They have, but they actually have to come up with the money.
Yeah, the town has to come up with the money because they use all the six hundred thousand dollars to pay back people. So that's where we get this five hundred eighty two thousand dollar chargeback.
The only solution today I've heard is, um, legislative and governor, right?
Uh, yeah, we're.
Or what?
Yeah, well, yeah, um, the, the, this, the long-term solution to this is the state legislature fixing it. And we're going to continue, and we will continue to lobby the, the legislature and the governor to fix this problem. In the end, it's not fair that the state creates a problem. And forces counties and schools and towns to follow state statutes. And it turns out to be amounts to illegal taxes. Our taxpayers shouldn't have to pay for that mistake. The state should pay for that mistake. They should, and they should pay for it completely. But as it stands right now, we're paying for it. So we have to. Fight the legislature, try, try to get them to pay up.
Right, Pat.
I might be misunderstanding things, which isn't uncommon, but so in your last statement, you said, you know, the state created the mess. And so locally, we collected taxes that are now deemed, um, have been illegal. Is it true though, we collected those taxes, we used those taxes, we benefited from those taxes? Is that a true statement?
Um, well, the county did not collect all those taxes. There's a large number of people who did not pay taxes.
Well, but the, of the taxes that were collected, whether under protest or not. Those taxes dollars stayed in the area that they were collected and were used for the benefit of those in the area.
Correct.
And so trying to think through this, we did benefit in this region from those tax dollars. And now we're obligated to make all those who pay taxes either under protest or not with interest.
Yes.
So yes, the state created the mess and the headache. Um, but we did benefit from those dollars. I don't see anything coming out of Madison to indicate that they're going to somehow reimburse us. For what we're asking for. I, I don't see that. And I think that's in part because we benefited from those taxes. Now we just have to make people whole. So what I'm thinking about right now is we've got this first round of reimbursements. You made clear that we're going to have a second round. And I'm just putting on my finance hat here. It's point eight percent monthly compounded annually. And I'm thinking about that interest rate and I'm looking at our banker over there in, in District One. And I'm thinking, boy, that's, you know, of all the things we financed, that's probably the thing that we're paying the highest rate on in effect. By delaying making everybody whole, whether they paid taxes under protest or not. So my question is, is it worth from just simply a finance perspective of looking at if we can. On the debt levy, and I don't know if we can, if we simply collected the money to make them whole sooner than later. Because from a finance perspective, this point eight percent monthly compounded annually, I believe is the highest rate we're paying for anything. Maybe we should make people whole this year, adjust other things the county does. And I'm thinking capital projects that we could put out a bit further. Um, so we can fit this into budget and keep taxes reasonable. From a finance perspective, that may make a lot of sense, but also I think just in our community in this region as a whole. It may help to. Um. Better relations with everyone and be able to move past this and work together more collaboratively. The, by taking the initiative as opposed to simply waiting until we're forced to do it.
Well, um, and Chairman Wiggins is here, maybe he can correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, under state statutes, if you don't pay your taxes under protest, you can't get a tax refund. So that's where the problem lies with the people who did not pay under protest. State statutes prevent us from doing that. And, and my, Mr. Chairman, am I correct with that?
The whole, the whole question of, uh, like spin lobby.
Could you use the mic, please? Thank you.
In my perspective, the whole question of state law being applicable as the guiding legal framework for how. Much money our tribe and our people are owed is, uh, is still, uh, debatable. Um, but that's an attorney in litigation, uh, piece that needs to be worked up. If the taxation schema of the state of Wisconsin was illegal from day one, uh, why would we be bound by? Um, uh, state constructs for the monies that were illegally. Uh, taken from our people and for the lands that we were deprived of. And so, uh, so there's a lot of, uh, to talk about there moving forward. The other thing about that is, um, so far our tribal government, our tribal nation has not. Entered the fray and payback because we've paid a tax bill under protest from day one too. So. Um, so there's, there's a lot of other, um. There's a whole different viewpoint from my perspective on, on the issues that you've talked about and kind of summarized. And, uh, it's, uh. It's going to be very difficult moving forward because, uh, our tribe isn't done. Uh, resetting our sovereign realm either. So. I would say that, uh, the next legal question is realty. If, um, if we cannot be deprived of our lands by treaty, the whole notion of. Non-travel people trading property within our sovereign boundaries is going to be a question. It's going to be taken to task. In the beginning, we tried to, I think you're being very gracious by blaming the state. There were a couple of very particular townsmen in town of Sanborn that couldn't let this issue go when we had everything kind of, uh. Resolved in a, in a bit of a, um. Governmental, governmental gentleman's agreement. And, um, we tried to educate them and inform them that they were wrong to bring this issue up. And that the, the results would be catastrophic. They ignored us and, and we're seeing this stuff play out and it's playing out back on them now. And, uh, and it's sad. Um, that goes way back to the beginning, um, prior to Walker's arrival in two thousand nine. The tribes were working, uh, with, with our attorney teams, with the state of Wisconsin. Attorney generals, uh, folks in what was called at that time friendly litigation. Because the state understood that they were susceptible and that we were probably going to flip the script on this stuff. And so the friendly litigation was to try to work this, these kinds of issues out proactively in the beginning. Um, that all changed with Walker's arrival. Uh, it still went into a little period of slumber. And then, um, there were some folks in the town of Sanborn, non-travel people. Who couldn't leave that alone because they felt like they were being deprived of something. And, uh, and now they are going to be. So it's, uh, you know, it's unfortunate, but at the end of the day. Um, I'm trying to, to listen and I'm trying to figure out ways that, uh, we could try to be proactive neighbors. Uh, moving forward. I know we pay a lot of money to the town of Sanborn. We give a lot of money to, uh, to the sheriff. Um, we've paid over a million bucks over the last few years and, um, and we are still owed. Um, and I know I've heard, uh, from others that your position is that you are owed money as the, as the, uh, county. Administrator. I don't agree with that at all, but, uh, but we can talk proactively, uh, looking, uh, looking to work together as we move forward. So. Thank you.
For clarification, you said there'd be another round of chargebacks. Is that pertaining only to those who pay taxes under protest?
Yes.
Or you weren't referring to those who did not pay taxes?
Correct. Only those who, those who have paid taxes under protest are eligible to receive tax refunds.
So for those who protested and there's a second round, is that something we could look at from a finance perspective? To see if it makes sense to address that sooner than later, given the interest rates that we are paying?
Um. Yes, but it's something we'd have to talk with the other counties involved and W C A, W T A. Because, you know, what we do affects every other county. So we set, if we do this, I mean, Bayfield County is going to be stuck to having to do the same thing. When there's an argument to be made that the state. Might be willing to fix this.
Could we recognize Scott Breding so he could speak?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
All right, Scott, you want to come up here? Yeah, actually, could you, yeah, could you do it in the form of a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to allow Scott Breding to speak.
I'll second that motion.
A motion to second on the floor to allow Mr. Breding to speak. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Most curious, thank you.
First of all, I want to try to clarify a few misconceptions here. Not all tribal members were taxed. The. Taxation of tribal members was due to. A state of Wisconsin ruling by the Department of Revenue that once property became fee simple. Out of trust, it could be, became taxable. It's been adjudicated in court several times, but. When the town of Sanburn removed fee simple property from the tax rolls. Which was approximately fifty-four homes and a few other private properties. But, um, those fifty-four were approximately eighty-seven percent of the total taxpayers in the town. Not any of the. Federal trust lands. I, as a town member of the town of Sanburn, asked the question when this happened is. Who is going to pick up the slack from? The people that you took off the tax rolls that were paying for services in the town? Right now on trust land, the trust. Gets money from the federal government to pay for several things in the township. Emergency services through HUD. The school district gets money through Title One to pay for tribal members that are not paying property taxes. To the school district. Those are the questions that we asked as a town member back from the beginning of this whole dispute. Nobody addressed that. Nobody said, hey, um. He, uh, the questions were asked, but nobody came with a solution. If the properties went back into trust, then the federal government would pick that up. And increase the funds that would go back to the town to pay for those people. Instead, I was told by the tribe is we don't have to pay taxes. So just sit there and shut up and pay your fair share. Matter of fact, you owe us. A lot of money for property you stole. I didn't steal my property within the boundaries of the Bad River Reservation. Or within the town of Sanburn. I legitimately bought it as fee simple and paid property taxes. Paid more than my share. I'm not getting any interest back on overpayment. I'm not getting any interest back on penalties or any. Uh, illegal taxation as I as a private property owner within the boundaries of the town of Sanburn. These issues were asked. The, the, the elephant is in the room as, hey, we need to work together as community. It wasn't to create an issue with the town and the tribe. It was asked to, what are we going to do to solve these issues? State of Wisconsin created it as a tax. To fee simple property owners. These people paid taxes for several years, not in protest. But back from eighteen eighty-seven, the General Ottman Act. Even Bad River Tribe paid taxes to the state of Wisconsin on fee simple property. But they stopped paying. They didn't just say, hey, let's put it back in trust. They didn't say, let's work this out to pick up what tax dollars were missing. No, it happened at a drop of a hat. And then the taxpayers in the town of Sanburn and Ashland County had to pick up the slack through. Extra taxes passed on to the taxpayers in. The. County of Ashland, that the federal government made these agreements with the tribe. There is funds there to help. Pay for those services, including road maintenance, including emergency services and public safety. That's all I've ever asked for. I'm not here to create a problem with the tribe or tribal members. And, and, and being an individual, the only way I could try to get some of those answers addressed. Was to file a lawsuit because nobody, I asked Ashland County to step up to the plate. Uh, Mr. Burl at the time told us they didn't want to take on that battle. It's not a battle. It's a discussion to solve the problem. Again, here you're asking the state. To come in and solve the problem because he created it. But is the state sitting here to talk about it? Are they paying their share back to the. To the town to, to help balance the budget, to help take care of. The tribal members that are out there being deprived of some of their services also? No. They're ignoring it, but they created the problem. The federal government created the problem. Are they at the table? They all talk about it, but they all make it out to be a issue of. Race. You're racist if you sit down and say, hey, we're going to talk about the taxes. No, that's not a race issue. The issue is who's going to help pay for the services. If the federal government made this decision with. Bad River in eighteen fifty-four and put them on a reservation, the federal government should be here trying to work through. The federal government should be here trying to work through who's going to pick up the slack. The people in the town of San Bern, the ten percent of people in the town of San Bern shouldn't be picking up the slack for the other fifty-four people on the reservation. Or Ashland County should not be picking it up. The tribe, the government made that agreement with them. Why? And, and they are getting funds from the federal government. Right now, why are they pointing the finger at me? I'm asking the question of who's gonna pick it up? That makes me a bad guy? Makes me a troublemaker in the town because I wasn't elected as an official to negotiate this stuff? I wasn't. But I asked the question. Nobody gave me an answer. And they still don't. And I've been, I've talked to several people all the way up to some of the top officials in this country, and they still haven't come to a resolution on it. But it could be solved locally with the right people sitting at the table. Thanks for your time.
Thanks, Scott.
I have a question for Scott. Scott, we've heard that town of Ash, or town of San Bern residents had to pick up the slack for the other part that if they were not Native American, they had to pick up the slack for the rest of the town.
Correct.
And, and we heard it was an outrageous amount that a few people had to pay.
Correct.
Is there any way that you can tell the county board what your increase looked like so they can understand what we're talking about here?
My property tax on my home went from eleven thousand dollars to over twenty-three thousand dollars.
So it almost.
For my home.
It more than doubled.
More than double.
If my house, if I got a letter from the county and said, Kathy, you're gonna start paying over a double what you're paying on your taxes. You're gonna put a lot of people out of their homes because they won't be able to afford it.
Kathy, there's several people that live in that town that moved up here to live on the lake.
Right.
As retirement homes. They're on fixed incomes.
Right.
They're in their eighties. And where are they gonna get that money to pay that kind of an increase? And nobody came and said, hey, that's wrong. Those people went to the county and said, hey, it's wrong. And the county says, oh, okay. What are you gonna do about it? And we're not troublemakers to ask those questions. We're not here to make it about a race, just because the people that live in white houses don't have to pay taxes and the people that live in the brown house are picking up for both. That's what I'm talking about. It's not about our federal government. I'm not arguing that our federal government didn't make an agreement
Right.
of eighteen fifty-four. Eighteen eighty-seven came in with the general allotment. There were some agreements then. That people agreed that they wanted to live outside the purvey of the federal government. They didn't want the fed, BIA to manage their property. They wanted to be able to take the property and go to a bank. Not the federal trust to get a loan to improve their house or their property. In doing that, they decided to put it in fee simple. And the bank can't go and, and foreclose on a house that is owned by a tribal member, so they won't finance it because they're protected by the federal government and the treaty of eighteen fifty-four.
I'd like to do a point of order here.
Mister Chairman. Mister Chairman. Mister Chairman.
There, there is, but.
Mister Chairman.
Point of order.
Are we done here now? We gotta listen to this back and forth stuff for what's going on here?
George.
Just quick question. I, I wondered how many property uh, owners, how many residents are affected by the tax increase? Is it a dozen or twenty?
Forty, forty-six, I believe.
Homes, homes. Yeah, something like that. Full-time resident. So fifty-four and I don't understand. You said eighty?
Fifty-four were taken out of that pool. So the eighty-seven percent that they talk about that were removed from the tax rolls, was that eighty-seven percent of Bad River Tribe? It's eighty-seven percent of the taxpayers.
So we have fifty-four homes that are subject to the increase in taxes.
No, that were removed from the rule. So there was a total of a hundred hundred and something, a hundred and five homes. Out of that, I believe fifty-four were removed and uh, thirty six, thirty-eight, I, the exact numbers I don't know.
Okay, thanks.
Just a couple of comments on uh what was previously said. I read all the transcripts of, of all the cases that were brought forward and ruled upon. They all came to the same conclusion. That the treaty of eighteen fifty-four was violated. So this doesn't, it shouldn't drop in the county's lap. The state screwed this up. And it's not like we agree. We also, we all agree here and, and Dan included that he's been pushing like crazy to get the state to fix this. They created the problem. They have to fix it. As far as relations go between, between uh non-reservation people and reservation. This wasn't their fault and this wasn't our fault. This was the state's fault. And in my estimation, and, and Dan's going down uh, later in the months to Madison.
Next month.
Pardon me?
Next month.
Next month, whatever. To see if we can't get to the bottom of this thing and get it straightened out so it doesn't cost anybody anything. And as far as it doubling the taxes go, that's the most traditional thing I've ever heard of. Yes, Marty.
Uh, I would like to go back to the question about the eight percent interest. Do, do you have a number that that eight percent is accruing on, you know, the amount?
Um, I don't think I have it out here on my computer, but I can get it for you. Um, the, the total amount was just for people, was one point four million, one point five million, almost as of the end of September thirtieth. Now, part of that money has been paid back. But it's still over a million dollars. That's accruing a point eight percent a month.
I guess what I wanted to do was to reinforce the point of if we're gonna have to ultimately pay eight percent interest on it. We should probably be, be a good idea anyway to cut our losses and pay it down as quickly as I can now.
George.
Uh, so zero point eight percent per month compounded is about ten point eight percent per annum.
Right. Which is less than the state charges. But I am, I would suggest we go to closed session where more of this can be discussed.
Bill.
I may, I make a motion that uh, we go into closed session.
Laura.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second to go into closed session. We'll do a roll call vote.
George Mika. Vtech.
Yes.
Huber.
Yes.
Shutey.
Yes.
Carl.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Murdick.
Yes.
Ellison. Left. McKenzie.
I wanna make clear that this is specifically as it relates to the county discussion and negotiation with the state and other taxing jurisdictions surrounding allocations of state funds to make up the shortfall in tax collection following the court decision impact on tribal lands.
Yes.
Negro.
Yes.
Metzinger.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Kenny.
Yes.
Puffal.
Yes.
Frannick.
Yeah.
Stark.
Yes.
Stender.
Yes.
Berlin. Miranda.
Yes.
Guse.
Yes.
Twenty, yes.
Okay. So uh, does anybody have a motion to make or do you want me to read it out? Okay. Okay, so um, authorize the county administrator to negotiate with the Wisconsin Towns Association, Wisconsin Counties Association, the Joint Finance Committee of the State Legislature. And the Office of the Governor of the State of Wisconsin regarding tax settlement payments with all Lake Superior Chippewa tribes and their affecting, affected jurisdictions through the tax years of two thousand fourteen to two thousand eighteen.
I'll make that motion.
I, I would like to add on that, that the county board approves his decision. Uh, because I don't know what he's going to negotiate and I'd like to know, because if he doesn't do good, then I, you know, I, I can't I can't see going along with it. So I, I'd like to add that to the motion if, if.
I'll amend.
Guse will second.
I, I would second it. I would second that motion. The amended a motion. Oh, sorry.
Use your microphone, please.
Sorry, I forgot. We got used to not using them. So I will um change my motion to reflect us approving whatever Dan negotiates.
Guse will second. Uh, I, I, I'd like to have a discussion on this a little bit. Uh, um. Can we, I'd like to offer an amendment instead of the county board approving it, putting a cap on what he is willing to negotiate to. The amount of the chargeback and any other, or for the county and any other uh, Lake Superior Chippewa counties involved in that.
Can we phrase that a little prettier? So.
I'd like to amend.
The interest, because don't we have a little interest on that or something?
I'd like to amend, instead of having us approve before it can be what's negotiated, that we put a cap on how much that we will allow to negotiate. That would be the amount of the chargeback in the packet. Five hundred eighty-three thousand. In addition to what the other counties that we don't know what they charge back is, to also be part of that negotiation.
Do.
So all, take care of all towns' chargebacks in Iron, Villas, Sawyer and Bayfield and Ashland Counties.
Are we responsible for their stuff?
No, we're not. But all that money would come out of three point six, is what he said.
Okay. If that was a friendly, I will take that friendly and make that my motion. If my second agrees on that.
Second agrees.
I, I can't go along with that. I don't think we should put a cap on how much we're gonna negotiate. I think we should have the county administrator negotiate it and then come back to the board and we can decide then.
I, the only problem with that is when you're sending uh, someone, this case Dan, to talk to the legislature and the governor. You can't say, well, that sounds pretty good, but I gotta have a county board approval. Because if we can't make this adjustment now, we're not gonna get anything done. We'll be sitting here in January trying to get this done.
I'm still not clear on my question I asked earlier about timeline on this. If you and the legislature, the governor's office don't agree on this and approve it ahead of when we have to issue tax bills. Are we going to have a third line on our tax bill for the chargeback?
Yes.
And so what this means is when you start negotiating because of where we sit mid-September, this all has to happen really quickly. So given that we don't wanna have a third line item on our tax statements, bills for the chargeback on this, this all needs to get approved quickly and therefore I think it's critical that you have the authority to do the negotiation, to come to an agreement without having to come back to us. Because otherwise, I don't see how we get our tax bills out without this chargeback, which would then defeat the whole purpose of the discussion.
Uh, would Supervisor Negro accept a friendly amendment to cap the amount at a million dollars, just to provide an outside cap?
That seems reasonable. And we do have to have that, uh, we do have to have that ability to negotiate. I don't see Dan going out there and gonna throw everything at it and, and just, he's gonna do the best he can at. So, and, and we do need to get this done in order, we, we gotta start trying to make people whole. This has been languishing around too long. So, yes, I would accept that friendly. So, all right, now.
Heather, can you?
So. Uh, it would be instead of the
Okay, so let me just try to, after, remember, because this was in my head. So let me just re, refresh it and then if we need to change it, we can. So everybody, everybody understands the exact same thing. Authorize the county administrator to negotiate with Wisconsin Towns Association, the Wisconsin Counties Association, the Joint Finance Committee of this Wisconsin State Legislature, the Office of the Governor of the State of Wisconsin regarding tax settlements made and pay, and refunds for Lake Se, Lake Superior Chippewa up to one million dollars.
Yes.
Okay.
If someone's talking, please use your microphone.
Sorry. Everyone heard the motion that Dan just proposed?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have a motion in a second.
Yes.
All right, we already have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor?
Discussion. The question I have is, we just went through closed session to talk about whether we were gonna negotiate or not. Um, I don't think we, I agree with Mr. Metzinger. I don't think we need or should put a cap on it. I think the, the administrator understands where this board is roughly at on it. And you know, if you put a cap on there and say, hey, we'll negotiate up to a million dollars, all they gotta do is get our minutes and they can see what we're gonna do. Um, so it's, it's, seems a bit foolish to put that cap in there. So I, I don't think it's needed and we should just give our county administrator the nod to go ahead and negotiate without restriction.
There, there was no cap in his motion, was there?
Yes, there is.
George.
The proposal had been to cover the five hundred eighty-two thousand plus the smaller amounts from the other counties. So we're giving the administrator permission to negotiate that amount. We don't know exactly what it is. We're saying it is not to exceed a million dollars. We're not saying to give away a million dollars. We're saying to negotiate.
We're saying to negotiate that amount, the 582 plus the other counties. And we don't know what they are, so just don't exceed a million dollars so we feel safe that we have a cap on it.
Are we ready to vote? Any more comments? I know I shouldn't have never.
I, I, I think this should be a roll call vote.
Yeah, roll call vote, please.
Vtech.
Yes.
Huber.
Yes.
Schute.
Yes.
Carl.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Murdig.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Negro.
Yes.
Metzinger.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Kenny.
Yes.
Pufal.
Yes.
Franick.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Stendor.
Yes.
Berlin.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Busey.
Yes.
19 yes, pass.
Okay, we're done with that. We've got a number eight reports and updates from the administrator.
Okay, well, you got most of them, but I do have one good update for you all. Uh, we just had our Samso Award renewed for another five years. So that's the Wellness Court upstairs. Um, so that's $400,000 a year in federal funding that we'll be getting for another five years for each year. Um, it's a third renewal, which is pretty amazing. Um, we're also hard at work on the budget. Uh, we hope to have a much better version for finance committee at the end of the month. So, uh, I, I still don't know what's going to happen with, there was a debate at last finance committee about commitments. I don't know how we're going to handle that yet. It's a budget buster. So we'll have to have a discussion on finance, whether or not we want to budget partially. And if we have to borrow later in the year, we do that. Or do we, or do we just go to debt levy now and take out more? Um, that's a discussion we might have in finance, but that's the really tricky one. Other than that, um, I think we're going to be able to get down pretty quickly here. Yeah.
Uh, can you remind or refresh us on where we stand on the question of a, um, a grant writer?
Um, that has, that's right now, that's in budgeted and contingency. Um, the, the exec committee did approve hiring a grant writer. Um, so we are, you know, we have, we have to go with finance with how they want to pay for it. So I have the money sitting in contingency right now. Um, if we, if, if approved in the full budget, we would hire after January 1st. Dan, I think Rich has a question.
Uh, could, is this the time that gas, oh, the carbon credits?
Yeah, yeah, so the carbon credits. So the deal, I mean, obviously we signed the deal, it went through. Um, the company has changed hands many times. Um, I don't expect we'll get carbon credit money this year. If we get it, the first payment will be next year. Um, I don't think Bayfield, Bayfield County did it before us and they have not gotten paid yet. They're hoping to get paid by the end of the year. Um, we kind of knew that going in that it'll take a while to get payments. So, oh, and I should tell you, there's been another opioid settlement. Um, so, you know, we set it with the manufacturers, the distributors, um, the bankrupt corporations. Um, we haven't gotten the money yet, but there's the Walgreens CBS Walmart settlement. Now, um, Kroger has settled. So that big grocery store chain. Um, so all these other small settlements are starting to come in now too. Um, so when we get the details on that, I'll put that, I'll let the board know. And at some point, finance committee is going to have to think about what doing, what to do with those opiate funds. Um, obviously HHS wants, wants it and I know the sheriff department has programs that they want to fund. So. Yeah. So, um, they, there's different things we can do with.
Sorry, thank you. Following up on Rich's question, if we don't get the carbon credit payment that we were due according to the contract, are we going to get that at a later date?
Yeah, it would come at a later date. We never, we didn't budget any of the revenue for the carbon credits because we knew this might happen. And this year's bu, next year's budget is not going to have any revenue from carbon credits. We're not going to budget revenue for something we don't know for sure we're going to get. So if we get it later, great, that's a bonus and then the board can decide what to do with it or not do with it at a later time.
Rich.
Is, is the payment still the same as originally was, like almost a million dollars a year for how many years or did he?
I believe it was half a million dollars.
Half a million? Is it still the same as what?
Still the same agreement. It's actually, but it's the selling of the credits is where the problem's happening. The market's going crazy on everything energy related right now.
Are we to supervisor updates yet?
Um, you can be.
Okay, I just had a quick thing. Um, at Northern College on Saturday at 4:30, there is a free community meal. So if you know anyone that is having a hard time meeting their food needs, please recommend that they go up there and enjoy all the wonderfulness that Chartwell's puts out. Um, our, our, our diners go out there on Friday for congregate now and, and I've never seen a happier group of people. So please spread the word, 4:30 this Saturday. Be there, be square.
Dan, were you finished with your report?
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else, uh, county board supervisors have?
Nor, Northern Airon Show, Saturday morning, one mile south of Hybridge. We've got all kinds of old tractors and machinery and a few pieces of machinery. We haven't figured out what they're used for yet. So everybody's welcome.
It's a great day to go out and celebrate.
Liz.
I was really glad that, um, Dan brought up that the opiate fin, the finance committee is going to be talking about that. I just want everybody to remember that there, these are people, these are families every day that are mourning their loved ones. Um, kids are without fathers, mothers, everything. Um, they're not always in obituaries. I counted back just on Bradley Funeral Home. The people that I've heard in the community for sure that I know that died from opiate overdosing, uh, fentanyl was, uh, 10 or 11 people. And that was just one funeral home, one year. And that's not all the people that I that were confirmed. So there's way more, that's one too many.
Anybody else? Uh, don't turn, forget to turn in your vouchers, Spike. Motion returns in order. Have a second. Motion by Mike Berlin, second of my Kathy Schute, you adjourn, all those in favor? Aye.